Good evening and welcome to the January 19th Budget Meet of the Town Council. If you kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right, this evening, we've got a number of departments and pieces we're going to be hitting, and we'll this evening start with welfare, or just go down the list?
Yep, down the list is fine. I'll save my comments for the questions we had last night till the end.
Okay.
Because I do have answers for what you asked us to look into.
Alrighty.
You're going to talk about public comments, just because it's on the agenda.
Oh, did we do that last night?
No.
I apologize for last night then. We will do that. If anybody from the public would like to address the council, you could step to this mic, or the one over there. And seeing no public here, I guess we'll close that session. Now, Pat, good evening. I didn't remember doing it last night. I appreciate it. How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening. You're the lucky one tonight.
I'm sorry, what?
You're the lucky one this evening.
Oh, I get to go first?
Yes.
Oh, is that why I'm lucky?
I assume so.
Alright, well, that's good. Well, I'm here to... Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this evening, I'm here to present the welfare budget as we presented it under the Town Manager's Budget. The total budget is $175,588, which represents a 3.6% increase, which is about $6,248 in total. Now, as far as the budget, we... There are three parts to the welfare budget: the administrative, the general assistance, and then the social services. So, first, just to address the general assistance line item, I just wanted to remind the general public that welfare is one of those mandated services that we do need to provide in the municipality, and we provide basic needs for people who are in Merrimack. The budget is put together with the hopes and the knowledge that we will try to think of everything that people will need, so that we don't go over. But if, for some reason, there is more need than budget, we do have to go over. So, this is why it's one of those things that we try to do a really careful job, and so we do not have to expend over what we're assuming. So, looking at the budget for this year, under general assistance, we have a 9.3% increase, which is one of the larger increases that I put for this budget. And there's a couple of reasons why. Number one, costs. Rents have gone skyrocketing. The... We've had a 9.4% increase in rents for what we call just fair market rents. And that's not including some of the really expensive rents and some of the apartments that have been developed in the town lately. So, this is one of the biggest reasons. The second reason is that the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which was operated through New Hampshire to help people with rent and housing the homeless in hotels, they have lost that funding, and therefore, they are... The state has come in, and now is only going to be helping people that are homeless in hotels, which means that they are now going to be reverting people to us, or back to us, for rental assistance, if it had anything to do with COVID in the beginning. So, this is one of the anticipations that we're seeing. And the other thing is utilities obviously have gone really skyrocketed, too. So, all this has resulted in some of our increases that you'll see. One of the things that we are seeing still is the amount of homeless that is occurring throughout the state. And I'm sure you've seen a lot of it on the news. A lot of people don't think we have homeless in Merrimack, and I have to disabuse them of that idea, because they are here. It is a reality. It's not something that's easy for a lot of renters, especially now, that even be renters that are existing now in some apartments. An elderly woman called me just the other day, saying her landlord is going to increase her rent by $400 a month in four months when her lease runs up. So, these are the kind of increases that people are seeing, and it's getting harder for people to be able to house. And so, what we're trying to do, though, is keep people from becoming homeless. That's really the key goal here. And so, we're working... We've been working all year with people in just their situations with increased costs in utilities, childcare, and everything that's going on, and then working with other agencies, trying to keep them housed and keep them going. So, that's been the main focus that we're seeing. But it is... Has been a really unusual circumstances that I... And I've been doing this for 24 years. I have never seen it like this before. I usually used to get about five homeless calls a year. Last year, I got 38 calls. This year, I got 44. So, that means these calls are unduplicated, too. So, this has really been a very serious thing that we're trying to deal with all over the state, but we still have it in Merrimack, too. So, what we're seeing is the increases are also in the social service requests, which is a 3.3% increase total. And this is based on the fact of the agencies that did request an increase. I looked to see, you know, if it was in basic needs. We use a lot of these agencies, like I said, to help us. You know, for example, when someone comes to us and they owe rent because they're going to have an eviction, we try to pay current, but we look to other agencies to compiling the back rent or the arrears, so that we can get people caught up, so they can prevent their eviction. So, a lot of these agencies, you know, are used in a lot of ways that we need to help people to stay in current. So, we have increased that, up to that percentage, for the... Like I said, the agencies that requested increases. And that's just really a basic outline of it. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to address anything.
It's not a big deal, but I was looking at your burials, 84, 94, and the actual on 21, 22 is 3,000. It's been zero or less than 1,000 many years, and now we're budgeting 1,100 for it. What happened?
It's just the reality of life, I guess, you know?
Or death, I mean.
Yeah, people are dying, and they don't have money for burials. A lot of them were people that were... I had one person in a hotel that died, and then another elderly man, he was just living by himself. Another person who was in a rooming house situation in Merrimack, you know? So, it's just odd situations, but it happens. You're right. Occasionally, I usually might have one, maybe two. Actually, I've had four in 12 months. So, there's been... You know, so it has been a very unusual circumstance. It is one of those things that you just never know what's going to happen on that one. And it is one of those things that sometimes is, you know, it's hard... That's a hard one to deal with, because I'm dealing with family who are coming in, or sometimes they don't have any family, and I'm dealing with the coroner's office to come in, and they're saying, "We have no family. We can't find anybody." So, they're yours.
Okay. It just struck me as such a large delta of zero multiple years in a row.
Exactly. Yeah, it's so hard, but all, you know, obviously, it just was three circumstan... Three people within, you know, that budget year.
Okay, thank you.
Andy? Some of the... Andy, excuse me, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention, Paul, it said Nancy Harrington is going to be a little delayed, but she'll be here.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Maybe this might be education on my part, but looking at 8399, the Greater Nashua Mental Health Center, it shows that the request was 72,000. We're currently budgeting 16,000. Is that typical difference between request and what we budget, and why is it such a great discrepancy?
They always ask for a lot more, and I have to tell you, I use them quite a bit. It is an important function to have, but the thing is, I'm also conscious of budget and how much money. As you see, I always try to give them something as we're going along, and I did give them one of the highest increases, which was like 8%, which was the most that I gave. And I usually am lucky if I can give like 2% or 3%, but this year, you know, because of the cost of living and things like that, I tried to be conscious of that and look to see what they were asked, what all the agents were asking for, and tried to just dribble it out, and what I thought was try to be an equitable manager, but at the same time, be conscious of the budget on the other side. So, it is a tough juggling job, because that is an example of a really critical agency that I use.
And is that typical? They're usually requesting more than what we can afford to budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I think we... I got for social services, I got $148,632 in requests, and I had to power it down to 81,000. And then that was, like I said, 3.3% over what we had done last year.
Yeah, tough choices.
It is.
Yeah.
And Pat, in the last... In the past, you've also explained that you go through these in great detail to see how much service, how many they're providing service for us versus other towns and things like that, and try to weigh all that out, so that we get a more equitable number than just the one that they shell out, saying, "Please give us this much."
Right.
And we appreciate that effort that you put into it.
Yeah.
Definitely. Right. Anybody have anything further? See none? Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Next, we have the library, 15.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Koval. I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. We were here just a few months ago, Yvette Cowser and I, talking about things at the library. So, we're here to present our budget and answer any questions you might have. There's really three areas that I wanted to bring to your attention. The first was that as we went to into the budget process, we were faced with costs that increased that were beyond our control, particularly health insurance and other insurances. So, that was something that we were mindful of when we were looking at the whole picture. We also are still in the process of trying to bring our staff salaries to a level that's commensurate with other libraries in the area, not to mention other employers, because that's just an ongoing thing that we've been pursuing. And the final thing is that, keeping all of that in mind and looking at the overall budget, the staff did a wonderful job of reevaluating some of our services, particularly electronic subscriptions and that sort of thing. So, we took their recommendations into account, and we were able to make some shifts and adjustments and get rid of some subscriptions that... To electronic databases, those sorts of things, that weren't really cost-effective or sustainable. So, those were all sort of the things that we went into the budget considering, and so this is what we came up with. So, do you have any questions for us about any of the line items or anything that's there?
Does anybody... Nope. I was just curious, what are you anticipating for a percent increase for staff?
For staff? So, we did it in two different ways. We have staff that are full-time, and they were given, I believe Janet's back here, I can double-check with her, was it 5% Janet? Okay. And then, we have some staff that are part-time that we addressed. We just had to... You give a 5% raise to someone who's making $12 an hour. It does not really make a difference. So, we took all the part-time staff, and we just gave them a $2 an hour raise. Now, some of those people work 10 hours or a few hours a week, so it sounds like a lot more than it actually ends up being. But, you know, $12 an hour is just... It's not acceptable. It's not commensurate with anybody that's looking for employees. So, that's where we're at.
Okay. You all set?
Did you switch around a lot of people from part-time to full-time?
No, there was one employment change this year. Somebody who was part-time became full-time, but then we've... Since then, a full-time employee has left. So, we still are kind of where we were before, and Yvette and the staff are looking at, you know, what it really... The best way to staff the library is, because traditionally, libraries have had a circulation desk and a reference desk, and really, everybody's there to help everybody on the floor. So, they're trying to make it sort of more streamlined, that there'll be people who will be addressing everybody's needs, and so that's kind of changed the staff dynamic. So, yeah. So, we have one open position for that... The one full-time open position right now?
Yes.
Yeah. So, we have one full-time open position as it stands right now, but...
But you removed the head of adult services?
Yep. Yeah, the head of adult services, when they left, that was the time that Yvette... And they started to take a step back and say, "Other libraries really aren't maintaining sort of these two separate departments." We're kind of looking at, how do we best serve people and provide coverage with the amount of staff that we have? So, yeah. So, that position was eliminated, so.
Okay. Great.
Oh, I had... There was one other question on your library materials. The numbers are all interesting, but the databases pops out as two to three times bigger than anything else.
Yeah.
I wondered if, just for the sake of everybody's education, especially mine, you could talk about, what are we spending $29,000 on in databases?
I will turn that over to Yvette to give you the detailed information on that.
While she's looking it up, I'm going to tell you that if you did the electronic version, it's all right here. You use heavily those little drop downs.
Okay, you know what? There might be some... There's probably somebody at home who wants to know, too. So, Yvette, this is also an opportunity for us to tell you about the wonderful services at the library. So, there we go.
Okay, so, databases. We actually cut two databases that were not... They had lower usage, but the other... The cost of other databases are going up. So, it offsets it a little bit. But that's everything. The databases, that's everything that you see on the website. So, ancestry, if you want to investigate your genealogy, or... Oh, there's a lot of them.
Draw a blank when you're questioning.
I probably can't rattle off every single database that we have, but we track our statistics for usage.
Right.
And we really want to, you know, spend money on the ones that are being used. So...
Okay. So, they do get a sufficient amount of use to justify 29,000 versus 11,000 in new books for adults and stuff like that?
Yeah, and she brings the statistics to the board, too. And I know that's something the board is mindful of also, is like, you know, how many people are actually using this for this amount of money and that sort of thing. So, we do look at that on a regular basis, not just as part of the budget process, but sort of ongoing, because as subscriptions come up, you're like, "Do we renew this? Does it make sense?" So, that's sort of part of the process throughout the year.
Yeah, and I think that really, you know, it ties in with the staffing changes, because, you know, library users now versus even 10 years ago or 15 years ago are much more savvy with how to search online or how to use a database. So, patrons who come in aren't asking for the same kind of reference help that they used to, even when I started in libraries. And so, that's why it's more patron services. We're following or we're investigating what other GMILX libraries in our consortium are doing and how they're staffing. They still have staff who are dedicated to reference services and helping someone, but the questions are different. So, the questions are, "Can you help me look for my ancestors?" You know, or, "Can you help me figure out how to use this device?" Because when you buy your device somewhere, they don't necessarily tell you how to use it.
No, they don't.
Or, "My kids gave me this shiny device, and I don't know how to use it either," you know? I mean, I know how to use it, but, you know, someone who comes in doesn't know how to use it, and where else do you go? I mean, it's kind of remarkable to me. Where else do you go for a question? Then it's really any question, you know? So, but yeah, a lot of people, they're really, you know, fairly savvy with how to search and find things. And so, we're investing, you know, we definitely are investing in databases that will help them find things and not just a random Google search, which isn't always reliable. So, but yeah. So, there is this kind of overall shift, I think, in library services about the kind of patrons we have coming in, and then we still have patrons like myself or anyone older than me.
Why did you point to me when she said that? Did you notice that? Or anybody older than me, so... She... Okay. I felt pointed at.
I was trying to not point to men.
You could point at some of us.
I mean, people like my wife will use the library for, you know, the way they were brought up. You can say that.
Okay, that's what he said. What he said. Perfectly done. Thank you.
Yeah, but just to reassure you, we do look at that regularly, because, you know, it is expensive. So, we want to make sure, and that's why there were some that were cut. There were some that are unsustainable, because we were paying per usage, and our goal is to get more people to use things. And if you keep going up, like, there's no end in sight. So, we had to make some shifts in that way. So, we're very mindful of that when we're looking at materials, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's it.
You have somebody behind you who wants to let you know something?
Oh, thanks. Thank you. Okay. You know, I don't...
You have to repeat it.
We have over 25 databases. 25. 25.
Yes, and thanks to Janet. She is really just wonderful to work with on the budget. So, I'm really appreciative that she is the library trustee, library trustee treasurer. That's wonderful.
She keeps us all looking at that one, for sure.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
We're all good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chair, Mr. Chair, before we move on, we just need to... For the minute taker, Nancy arrived at 6:50 tonight.
I'm here. That's important.
Understood.
I was tardy the other day, too.
All right. Thanks, Paul. We'll move on. Parks and Recreation, number 13.
Not last on the agenda.
I know.
You didn't want to listen to me rattle on.
Get a little sassier, or you might get moved.
All right.
No, we're not going to say it, but... All right, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And thank you for your time tonight. Parks and Recreation exists specifically to provide quality of life to the residents of Merrimack, and we do this through programs, events, and facilities, in well-stated and well-maintained facilities. I looked it up today. It kind of struck me this afternoon. This year marks my 10th year presenting this budget to you.
Wow.
Yet it seems like two.
Congratulations, yeah.
Start of 10 years, yeah. And some days, I have no idea where the date of year went. I really don't. It gets worse as you get older. And, you know, we've come a long way in 10 years. When I first got here, you know, the department did about 20 programs and events a year. And actually, that first summer I was here, we had a total of 750 camp... Summer camp registrations. That first year, we were losing money, and obviously, we've been focused on that, you know, and growing and expanding over the years. And this past summer, we actually had our highest enrollment in camps history. We had more than 1,050 registrations for camp. And, you know, we've sold out, you know, 95% of the summer last year. Well, last week, we opened up summer camp registration for this year. In a single day, we had more than 800 registrations. We're in the last week, we're now over 900 already, so we're on track for somewhere around 1,250 right now, if it keeps trending the way it is. And it's just kind of amazing where things have gone. As you know, our... And for the benefit of anybody that's at home, our budget's broken down into two components: our taxpayer side of the budget, and then obviously, we talk about our recreation revolving fund. The taxpayer-funded side is really, for the most part, we've been level-funded this year for across the board. And so, I'm not going to go through line by line, because there's not a whole lot changed. A lot of things that have changed are things that we don't have any control over: natural gas, electricity, whatnot. You know, there are a couple of things I do just quickly will point out. So, in your books, under 8107, 8107, which is the part-time wages, you know, as the libraries just said, you know, trying to pay somebody $11 an hour just doesn't work anymore. You know, we struggled mightily last year at that rate, and had to do something about it this year, or we would have been in really tough shape. And so, you know, one of the things we did end up doing, both, you know, on under part-time wages, and also when we get to the revolving fund in a minute, is obviously, we did raise up pay rates for... To kind of bring us into market rates. And as the library said, yeah, $12, it's $11 and $12 an hour, it just doesn't do it anymore. But offsetting that is, you know, last year, we had in the budget a part-time summer maintainer that we... Was a new position we had added, which we could never fill, because nobody wanted to work 20 hours a week. And then the farmer's market, we didn't end up running that last year either. And so, both of those things have been cut from this line item compared to last year. But the net result here is, we actually are giving its $3,000 less than last year's budget for this line item. Secondly, moving down to 4th of July, 8372, this line item went down by $10,000 this year. The Rotary Club has already decided that they just don't have the personnel and manpower this year to do the Family Fun Day. The town used to give them $10,000, so that this budget went down by that amount for that reason. We'll obviously still do the parade and the fireworks, as we always do, but that's the reason for the change there. Like I said, pretty much everything else has stayed the same. We did invite the Adult Community Center and MYA, and I don't see them here, but they submit their own budgets for those particular line items. But is there any questions on any of that stuff before we talk about revolving?
If I just can, I had a conversation with the Adult Community Center today. He... They requested an increase of roughly $3,700 for their increase, major because of natural gas heat. Repairs and maintenance was most of it. It's $3,000 for repairs and maintenance over there. There are some things that are getting a little bit old in the tooth that need to be repaired, such as carpet tiles and things of that sort. So, that would come out of this money. And at the time, when they presented the budget, the $3,000 as part of the increase was not that big of a deal, because I know, we just spent a lot of money fixing up that building, and the senior center actually stepped up to the plate and put a lot of their money into fixing up to that, into the budget as well. The other one is the MYA. The MYA is the Youth Association. They went up also about $3,500. However, if you looked at it, their program costs increased about $80,000, but their revenues also increased about $70,000, $80,000. So, to offset that $3,500, knowing that cost of insurance is more a cost to buy a baseball or a bat or a uniform, has been more additional. So, that $3,000, I felt, was not that much of a increase to both of those budgets: a $3,000 for Adult Community Center and a $3,000 for MYA. So, they both were, if they wanted to come, but they talked to them, and I didn't see any need for them to come and present those small increases.
That's true. But if you could, a question I would ask of the MYAs, I'm just curious as to how their participant... Participation rates are, because there's been a lull, not a big drop necessarily, but there'd been a lull. I'm just wondering if they've come back.
We actually have that information. They give it to us when they submit their budget. I don't know if it's in your budget book, but we can get it to you, but we do get that information.
More of a curiosity thing, yeah.
Yeah, we do get that information.
I'd just like to say a few things about the MYA.
That's right, 'cause you sit on there.
Yeah. I knew that they were not going to be here tonight, and I told them that I would just say a few words. They're... Remember, they are also doing a bookkeeper now, and they're also doing tax audits. They just had a recent tax audit approval. Is that right, Paul?
An audit, not a tax audit, but an audit itself.
Right.
They just came in.
It was complete.
Complete, and Tom can speak more to it, but it seemed to be a very clean audit from what I read.
So, and I wanted to make a point of saying that, because many of us have history problems with that, and I just wanted to compliment them on that.
and I just wanted to compliment them on their, not only due diligence, but beyond diligence, being able to try to, one, get on the right track, but also to get ahead of track. I mean, they're really being much more proactive than they ever were before. And just to address your popular, your question, it's very busy. First of all, we had allowed them to bring in out-of-town. Well, then, that's not happening anymore, because COVID had to do with the COVID, and towns are becoming more active in their own. So the need to have that exception, where we allowed out-of-towners to come in, which was not ever very high, that is not an issue anymore. But their signing up is really, everything's booked up.
Very good.
Yeah, there's very little, their problem now is, again, fields, it's not anything new. It's being able to get the space to do the practices and do the games. The middle school, what was it, who was it that had the leak? That one of the schools had the pipe leak.
Oh, the.
Upper Elementary. That messed up their schedule, their scheduling, was it Upper?
No, it was, it was Mashakola Elementary School.
Okay. That messed up their games and their practices. So again, it's just one of those circumstances no one can plan on, but they have to adjust. And of course, they have games with other towns, so they have to. But anyway, they're doing well, and I just wanted to be able to commend them on the good job that they're doing, because they're being very deliberate.
Yep, very, very good. Excellent. No need to ask that question, Paul.
I could tell you, they say they have three thousand one hundred and nineteen total participants. The largest program, of course, is soccer, with thirteen hundred and eighty-two. The next one is basketball at five-thirty, then baseball at five-ten. Football's in cheering. Football in spirit is two fifty-five. Lacrosse is two twenty-five. Softball's one seventy-two, and wrestling's forty-five. And the ones they were needing outside participation was the lacrosse program and the football program, but it seems that the participation in those two programs has increased, so they don't have to go out for the town.
Thank you, that's great to hear. Does anybody have anything for Matt on that?
Yes. So on that?
None on that?
None on that?
All right, so now we'll talk about the revolving fund.
Hold on a second, Matt. Well, so, okay, let me ask a quick question before you go. I thought they were talking specifically about MYA. The, Paul, you, on the infrastructure, eighty-five oh five? Did you clear out that? Do you have a plan to do something, or? There was a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar request for Park Road.
Yeah, that was two-hundred-and-thirty thousand to pave the road down and around. I think we, we're not at that point yet. The road is in, excuse me, rough shape, but I think we need to see what we can do in-house to help that. A lot of the issues with the road is some drainage problems, and I don't know if we can do those in-house before we get to doing that. Of course, the time we'd be doing that in-house project is when the day camp would be in play as well. So it's just, we need some more planning to look into that and see what the best alternative is, because there's some ledge out there, for those people that don't know, there's a lot of ledge out there. If you go past the tennis courts, that's when the ledge really starts picking up again. But we need somebody to design a drainage plan down there and get it in. And I hate to say this, but with Dawn leaving, I was hoping to task the engineer, town engineer with that, so that we could see what it is. The other thing is, is looking at what roads we're repaving. The crushed aggregate has been holding up pretty well. So to see if we could do that in certain areas and not have to pave everything again. Especially, I think, the road paves, if you, if you have been down to Wasserman Park or the beach, Natta Cook Lake, there's a, there's a gate, and from the gate, it's paved with, do we need that pavement? Or can we do a crushed aggregate as a walkway from that gate down? Because the only ones who really drive there are the police department when they're going down, or Matt and his staff, if he needs to do anything down at that level. Cars usually do not, are allowed to drive down to there, so can we get away with the crushed aggregate there? The other thing is, is there's a bunch of stuff. So I just need our engineer to look at it and see where we're at with it and put a plan together, because worst thing I want to do is I want to drop two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars into paving and trying to fix a drainage issue, and it doesn't fix the issue. Okay, that's why.
Thank you. Matt's not arguing, so.
He's not happy, but. We had this conversation already, so.
So for item eighty-three, sorry, eighty-three seventy-three, I forgot my glasses. Memorial Day Parade and Reeds for the Graves, I just want to clarify that. The reeds are for the memorial statues, and the rest of the money goes towards the buying of the flags for the cemeteries and the graveyards. And what happens is the money goes to either the BFW or to the American Legion, and they switch off every year on who's organizing it.
That's for the Memorial Day Parade. That they do.
Yeah, they don't mention the flags in the description, I just talk about reeds, and that's not exactly correct.
Okay, are we all set now?
I'm tied.
You good, or do you?
Yeah, I, I just want the council to know, from my perspective, Matt keeps the Parks and Rec Department in really good shape. And he's always very forthright with the committee, Parks and Res Committee, in terms of what he views as the need. I've taken some time on my own to walk the areas, we were about the paving that we've talked about. I won't say at length, but it certainly had its time with the committee and Matt. And yes, there's work that's necessary there. So I would encourage the manager and whatever to continue looking at that, because with the improvement, the beach area, that's brought a lot of demand and a lot of interest to Wasserman Park. And, yeah, when you drive in, you don't think about it being as integral as it is to get to the beach with a vehicle. So my, my encouragement is, yeah, keep moving forward, and I'm sure you'll learn from Matt and the committee in the coming months.
Yes, thank you all.
Built-in speed bumps.
You've cut four cents there already. And they still speed down them, but, you know.
The manager knows I've never been bashful.
All righty, now I think we're set to move on to the.
All right. Before we get going on that, I just want to preempt. Matt came to me with this great idea. I asked him to do a lot of research on the idea before he brought it to me. It's been about nine months of back and forth, that we've been going back and forth with this idea. It's morphed in from, how can we make it work? And how can we make the revolving fund pay for the cost of this new program that he's going to be talking about tonight? But it's not something that we, we entered into lightly. Matt has done a lot of research on it, and I'll let him go ahead and explain what he's proposing for the revolving fund in a new program. The other thing is, the reason why it's coming in front of the council is because new programs have to be approved by the council. And this is really a very, this is a large new program. It isn't, we're gonna learn how to throw horseshoes. This is a very significant program, and that's why we're coming in front of the council with the program tonight as part of the budget presentation.
All right, so just a bit of a refresher for anybody that home. Revolving Fund was established seven years ago, all the program, and it used to be that, you know, you guys would give us, you know, we'd come a year and a half in advance, we'd go, okay, for camp in a year and a half from now, we need a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars for camp, and we need thirty thousand for swimming and whatever. And then all the money that came in went back to the general fund. The revolving fund was established so that we didn't have to do that. We didn't have to come ask for the money first. But the revolving fund realistically is, is, we operate as a self-supporting entity. So money comes in from the programs, and it goes, that same money, it goes and pays it back out. And so we don't get any tax dollars to run any of the, any of the things that we run of the programs here. And then on top of all the direct costs associated with every program that we run, there are a, the, the town gives us a, there's a, what's called a director's salary allocation. And it's basically, it's HR's time for stuff related to Parks and Rec payroll, purchasing, you know, so forth. And so every year, Tom gives me a number and says, okay, in this, in this year's budget, you need to recoup X dollars that you're giving back to the general fund on top of those direct costs of operating. So, for example, on top of Natta Cook Day Camp, okay, if camp is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, it's really, we got to come up with three hundred thousand, because that extra fifty's going to end up going back to the general fund. So we're giving money back to the general fund to kind of offset those, those fees. And so for this year, that allocation is fifty-nine thousand, one ninety-one. Now, while we offer, right now, we're offering close to three hundred programs a year. A lot of those are kind of small-scale in nature, they are, you know, a lot of them are run by independent contractors. You know, they're nice programs and services to offer, but they're not moneymakers by any means, but more just, it's a service to offer. And don't generate a whole lot of excess revenues. But we've still got that fifty-nine thousand dollars to recoup every year. And so the way we do that is we create kind of our main programs, our seven main programs, the ones we expect to run like camp every year. And we divide that fifty-nine thousand dollars into those major programs to ensure that we are able to give that money back to the general fund that we're required to. And, and, and I'll get into that in just a second. Historically speaking, our summer camp programs have covered ninety-two percent of that fifty-nine thousand dollars, and which puts a lot of burden, frankly, on the camp. You know, it's, okay, it's not just direct expensive camp, it's, it's that extra bit that we've also got to cover, which also affects cost of camp and, you know, you know, those types of things. As Paul said, we've been talking for about nine months now about the idea of the need for another large-scale program to diversify our offerings, as well as to take some of that, the burden off of the summer camp from having to pay that fifty-nine thousand dollars. And, and the idea we have here is after-school. And when the revolving fund was first came about seven years ago, we did talk about it then, and there was concerns about stealing other, you know, providers' businesses and which, and we're not going to do, and I'll explain why in just a second here. But so every year, and it's gotten, we get more and more every year, we get calls from parents, particularly at the end of the summer, and they go, school, shoot, school's starting in two weeks, and the school after-school program is full, and where do I go? And, and it's like, what do we do? And so they call us, because they just assumed that we would offer something, and we'd never been able to. And so, as I said, we are proposing a new after-school program at Wasserman Park, because I've got a building that's heated, sprinkled, and sits vacant pretty much every weekday afternoon and evening during the entire school year. As I said, we get those requests from parents every year, and because there are a lack of options in town. And so the first question I'm sure many of you have is, is there a need? And the answer is clearly yes. And, and before I get into how, I'll just say, with this program, we're looking to start small, and we're looking at just Thornton's Ferry for the first year. One, because it's going to be the easiest to draw families, because they live in that neighborhood. And then obviously, it's closest to the park. At Thornton's Ferry School, there are roughly five hundred kids in the school, and there, which are currently served by four after-school programs. Combined, those four programs only cover just over a hundred kids of the five hundred in the school. The, the, those four programs all put out their registrations in March and April of, so this year, they'll put them out in March and April for next September, and by the middle of April, they're sold out. And so any parent that's not kind of right on the ball usually leaves out and is kind of scrambling. And again, that's, that's when we tend to get all those phone calls in the summer, going, oh, what do I do? You know? But the, so the four programs, which is the one that the school district runs, which takes forty-five kids. The YMCA takes forty-five kids, and they bus them to their facility. And then there's two small daycares in town that take a dozen kids each, because they have vans that they transport them, and that's it. The licenses, the, the school and the Y are limited in capacity by their license, which is forty-five kids. That's the most they can, they're allowed to take based on the space they have available for their after-school program. So back in December, I met with Department of Health and Human Services, had them come down, walk through the function hall, and we can easily be licensed for forty-five kids. Actually, we could go higher, if I add one more bathroom, I could go higher than forty-five, I'm not looking to right now. But we have the potential to go higher down the road. But first year of this program, we're looking at twenty-five to thirty kids. As I said, the school district, the, the four school after-school providers currently are only serving one quarter of the population of that particular school. The reason we're looking primarily, aside from the fact that Thornton's Ferry School is obviously in our neighborhood, the biggest challenge and the biggest cost to after-school is actually bus transportation from the school to the park. It's two hundred dollars a day, which works out to thirty-six thousand dollars a year. And unfortunately, you would need a separate bus from each school, because you can't do a loop, because they'd be sitting in the lobby of the school, and that doesn't work. And, and so, again, we're starting with, looking to start with one school, and then if it really takes off and there's still demand and we have the capacity, then maybe down the road, we can do Master Cola, you know? But that'd be kind of a year or two, you know, we'll see what happens. Now, municipalities in New Hampshire are exempt from state childcare licensing. However, like day camp, we would opt in to becoming licensed, and we would choose to go through that process, just so we're kind of on the same playing field, and people don't feel like we're trying to do something behind the back, or, you know, whatever. But obviously, we'd be looking to do this kind of in the same timeframe that the other providers are doing, which is kind of March, April, May at the latest, so that parents do know that they have those options available to them next year. In the discussions that Paul and I have had for the last nine months, the, you know, the, you know, an after-school program, realistically, we're talking, you know, it's staff, you know, staff person and certainly a staff leader working like two to six-thirty. You know, trying to find somebody in this job market that only wants to work twenty-five hours a week is going to be, as we saw last summer, is kind of next to impossible right now, no matter what you're paying, because just the candidates just aren't there. And so as part of this, by chance, I happen to be in need of a new director at Natta Cook Day Camp this summer as well. And, and so what we're looking is actually proposing a new position that goes with this, that would become director of the day camp program, director of the after-school program, and then also cover like school vacation weeks and all those other things, which we struggle right now to staff anyway. What I want to stress here is that the salary and the benefits of this new proposed position would be hundred percent paid out of the revolving fund, so there would be no tax impact on them. So there, there's no kind of, doesn't affect the tax rate, doesn't affect anything, because we would be covering that. And so as we, as I kind of flip to our kind of budget sheets on the revolving fund now, if you want to look first, kind of at, the first one is obviously the day camp budget. And so in there, I want to point out kind of three different lines. First of all, you'll see down probably about two, probably, where is it? A little more than halfway down the page, you'll see a line item that says Director Allocation Revenue Transfer to General Fund. This is that fifty-nine thousand dollars that we've always had in there, that we talked about earlier for HR's time and payroll's time and all that. So for Natta Cook Day Camp, you know, we're talking thirty-five thousand dollars of that fifty-nine thousand in this proposed budget. It's, that's where that, that director's salary allocation's coming from. That's still talking about the bigger picture of what we've always done, not the, the new position yet. And as you go through all the other sheets in, in, under the revolving fund, you'll see that same line item, and it's just different percentages of what's covering what. Now, if you look at, again, on the day camp budget, you'll see a director's salary line. It says camp ASP director hours, so that's where that portion of this new position's hours would be paid from, based on what we're expecting, we're looking at twenty-one dollars an hour to start. And, and then as you go down to the bottom of that, of the page there, you'll see camp ASP director benefits and in the, and under Natticook Day Camp, it's 25%. And so the cost of kind of the benefits for this new proposed position is $32,835. And so again, similar to the director seller allocation, I've divided it into those programs that this person's going to be directly responsible for running. So Natticook Day Camp will pay, you know, $8,200 worth of their benefits. The the after school program, obviously we'll be covering kind of the left line share of those benefits, which is $22,000 and so forth. And, and so we feel confident that we can not only serve a need that exists within the community. Like I said, we get calls every year. We can clearly see that there's only a portion of the school that's being served by what's available out there. And, and, but we can do that without stealing anybody's business. And, and secondary to, you know, serving the need and kind of diversifying our programs, it helps us as a department. We, right now there's two of us full time, there's James and I. And we're both kind of out straight. And right now, for example, James and I do kind of all the pre camp setup. We're working on it and starting in December, right up through camp start. You know, it's hiring, it's marketing, it's recruiting, it's interviewing, it's scheduling, it's all of that. And then literally right now in the current model, the week before camp comes in, the summer camp director comes in and says, okay, here's your staff that we've hired for you. Here's all the schedules, go. You know, and, and that, you know, if we had a full time position, this year round person, now they can do all of that work on their own versus us handing it to them. What that in turn does is frees James up a little bit. Now a big burden chunk dumps off of his lap, but then that takes a little bit more off of me. One of the things Paul will tell you if you ask him is I work too many hours. And you've probably seen me because I'm kind of everywhere. The, you know, if, if we free up Sam and James' time, we, it frees up some of my times because then I can pass on some of my tasks to him. And then, you know, right now I'm, I average anywhere from 45 to 70 hours a week. And after 10 years, that's getting a little old. But if I can free up some of my time, then we can focus more on things like athletic fields. And, and, you know, the, you know, the other thing that tends to come up is, you know, because there's only two of us and I'm salaried and he's hourly, when we have things on weekends that need somebody to be there, it's usually me, which is where a lot of these hours come from. So for example, last year we did almost $10,000 in function hall rentals. Well, guess who's the one that's usually opening the building on a Saturday or a Sunday to let said people in? And we, we were trying for a while with codes and, and, you know, access and whatever. And it, we've had a lot of problems with unfortunately like, okay, you're, here, you're in the building, alls you have to do when you live is turn off the lights and shut the door. And then come to find out they leave the door wide open. You know? You know, and then all of a sudden, you know, you know, we have like security cameras in the basement, for example, because people aren't allowed down there. And all of a sudden the cameras are going off because random people in the park just kind of wander into the building when the building doesn't get secured and, you know, that kind of thing. So I don't mind certainly coming in, went to deal with some of that, but the, the 70 hours is getting a little old. So all, all told, again, we're trying to do, we're trying to kind of solve a couple of problems here. We're trying to expand, we're trying to serve some needs. We feel we can do so again, without kind of stealing anybody's business. And it kind of gives me some more resources to kind of, so I'm not spread so thin. And that's what I've got for questions.
Is this the program, one of the couple more programs?
This is the new, so after school is the new program that we're adding.
I met a few years ago, no, I met a few years ago, Eileen had to put the brakes on you because you had all these grand things you wanted to do. So this is one of them.
This was one of them. This is one of them and he beat me up for two years. But honestly, Matt, Matt is correct. Looking at Matt, Matt's always here. You know, 4th of July, he's here. You know, Christmas Day Parade, he's here. Easter, he's here. He did, you know, he does a knockout job. Everything, when we sat in that interview 10 years ago, I can't believe it's 10 years. But when we sat in that interview 10 years ago, that, that counselor Yakubov at the time asked Matt about expanding and things of that sort. Matt has done, Matt has brought a lot of things to the table. We're at a better position now, coming out of COVID and everything else, to try this plan. Matt has done the one weeks for school vacation. This year he couldn't do it because he couldn't find staff to do it. This would take this person to have the person's staff and say, okay, this is what we're doing after school. We're doing it after school. So now we're doing it instead of after school. We're doing it for the, the week and we'll have the staff there so that we can provide these programs. The big thing is, is like Matt said, the hours are just that I've seen him put in are a lot for, for one person. He's rivaling those old timers Bob Levan and the number of hours he puts in in a year. You know, and he needs some balance. He needs some balance with it and, and to take some stuff off of James's plate and give, from Matt's place to give to James, to expand James a little bit and doing some stuff. So Matt can start looking at some of these other things and possibly expanding even more programs. Because now he can take a breath and, and look at it and, and deal with that instead of, you know, okay, let's just boom, 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 boom. And, but that's one of the reasons why at this time, we're in a much better financial position with the day camp and the revolving fund to do this than we were pre COVID.
Thanks Paul. Barbara?
Yeah, I can attest to the hours Matt puts in because I was on the 275th anniversary committee. And that was an interesting committee. So that's all I'm going to say, but I saw the hours you were putting in. I think it's a great idea and here's, we've all had kids who had to go to school. Then you have to figure out what to do with them after school because you're working. It gets even tougher when they get into the preteen years because they're, I don't want to be with the babies. So yeah, so I, I, you know, grammar school is good, but I hope you get to middle school next. Because that's where a lot of the need is as well, because they're too young yet to stay home alone, even for an hour or two. So, but I think it's an excellent idea and you're right. There aren't a lot of opportunities for parents here in town. They usually have to go to Nashua or even sometimes send to Bedford and Manchester.
Well, I just want to be able to express my faith in him. I was here with the previous director and the previous, and they did a fine job. But when you came in, you, you're right, you had all these ideas and promises, we're going, yeah, right. Well, you did it. You actually did it. There was not anything that you didn't promise that didn't come out exactly as you said. And there were a lot of complicating factors in the meantime. I mean, obviously COVID and various kinds of things. The places at Wasserman that had to be fixed, maintained, upgraded and all that. So I have faith that your one evaluated correctly, expressed a need, identified the need correctly, and that your plan will probably work. So again, I just want to express my faith in your ability to do this because you've already proven yourself in my opinion. So I would support your plan.
I agree, it's easy. Tom and Eddie?
You can't add to that at all. I mean, you've been doing a great job for the town and we really appreciate it. You have, I was here with Nancy when you came in. And just, just the, the change overall in the Parks and Rec department. It's become so much bigger of a program, so much more valuable to the community. So I think, I, I'm sure you did your homework and I'm, I was, I was set from the, the first introduction. So good luck and congratulations on it.
Yeah, be careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
Eddie?
Yeah, I, I think the fact that we, we identified an asset that the town had, a building, and we can turn it into a need that the town has, or to satisfy a need that town has, I think is an excellent idea. My sole concern is probably not within your control and it's whether we can find the employees to do this. And, and again, that, that's not going to be within our control. We'll put the, put the rec out there and hopefully we can find quality candidate. But that's going to be the challenge right now. And I think once you find out, the rest of it will be easy. You'll make it easy.
I actually have a lead on somebody that'd be interested in this if it goes through.
Perfect.
That has already worked for the town before, so. You know, and then, you know, realistically the counselors that would work in say after school next summer, I'm picturing it's going to be, you know, four, five, six people and this one works two days and this works three days and, you know, it's going to be a, but right now, one of the challenges like school vacation week, okay, you work three weeks during the off season, you know, well, they have other jobs. And so then it's like, oh, can you come work this week? Oh no, sorry, I'm working on my, you know, it's, there's no consistency. So versus if I can say, you've got a job every Monday, Wednesday, Friday for these hours, you know, it, it, it helps keep that staff a little bit.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Eddie?
Yeah, again, my faith in Matt, my faith in his planning and his ability to bring things to fruition in a really, really positive manner. Go.
Alrighty.
Don't go too fast.
So yeah, we don't, we don't have to do anything for tonight. That's just at the budget time.
No, that was when, when we approved the budget either next week or one, after the public hearing, then we'll, we'll be able to move forward with it. But we just wanted to present tonight, get the feedback from the council.
Nancy?
I just want to say thank you to Matt. I too have been at Wasserman a number of times with my grandkids for events and he's, he does everything. Not only is he planning and overseeing and organizing, but I know I've run to him and said, okay, we need an ambulance on this field. And I mean, the massive coordination and oversight that he provides and thinking outside the box. You know, and, and how to, to, to create some revenue and, and provide a, a service to, to our community. So, and always with a smile on his face despite the 70 hours. So thank you, Matt.
Lots of coffee, that's how.
Alrighty, well good. Thank you, Matt. Okay, next is fire 03.
So
Hey Chief.
Believe it or not, Chief DeFranzel's been here for, this will be his second budget cycle. That'll be a little, that'll be a little different for him this year because this is his budget that he put forward. So, but he's here to talk about both.
It's my budget with amendments from the town manager. Which I expect, so that's all right. I think overall, if you looked at our total budget, it actually went down. And again, that was through help with the town manager reviewing some of the line items that we have within this operating budget. And understanding some of the nuances that I don't have any control over and that's under his purview. So we were able to put together a budget that while I got some increases in some areas, the, the bottom line is we actually are under 10,000 from last year. So I think this is a, a great budget for our department and it certainly picks up on some things that we needed to make adjustments on. I don't know if you have any questions as we go, I can do a couple of highlights here. The biggest highlight for me, which is one thing that I, I think I stressed when I said I wanted to come here was the training opportunities for our firefighters are, are becoming less and less workable on duty. Our call volume last calendar year was over 3,600 calls, which is an increase of over 300 from the year before. So that means we're getting busier, which means we don't have as much time as we'd like to spend on true beneficial training. Now, when I say true beneficial training, that means actually physically using ladders, physically using hose, physically using other things that it takes time to set it up. Then we have to, you know, train with it and then put it all away. The other day, the guys were trying to simulate some hose operations. And the moment they got the hose laid out and everything set up, we got an ambulance call. So that disrupted the entire operation and it's becoming problematic that if we want our firefighters to be skilled when we need them to be, we got to give them the opportunity to train. So I had asked for 20,000 to have at least an eight hour session for every firefighter to do what I like to call live fire training. I'm very happy that we don't have a lot of fires here in the community. But when we do, we need the firefighters to be able to function, you know, effectively and efficiently when we have those. So while we weren't able to get the full 20, we got around 15,000. I can work with that, it's a start. And we certainly can evaluate how these things go as we move the department forward and make sure they get the proper training and the good training that we get. And that we should have for those guys. I'm sure most of you are taking classes and, you know, when people's phones ringing or some other distraction comes along, well now you've just lost total, you know, thought and everything that's going on. So it's really important that we try to get our guys the, the real in-depth training and get them away from the work environment, keep them focused so we can, you know, keep them really high skilled like we, like we currently have them, you know, here today. So most of the other increases that you'll see in the budget are operating increases that, again, it's a projection. I don't know what costs are going to be for supplies and materials and equipment. And just a lot of things waiting to try to wait for them to come in. You know, you know, we have a ladder truck on order. We're not going to see that for another year. We have an ambulance on order, I might see that by the end of this summer. We heard that last spring. So it's, it's been a challenge. So some of those line items have had to go up to, you know, maintain the equipment that we have. Cause we got to keep it and make it go. So, but I think overall, the, the fire department operating budget, I think was a pretty realistic picture of what we need to keep our department operating and at a high level. And I would certainly answer any questions that you guys have.
Nancy?
I just want to express that I have no reservations about your additional need for training time. You have a very young staff, which is terrific. I mean, they all look like babies, but that tells me, because I look that much older, but.
We, we do have a young department, yes, and I have the same vision. I look back and go, wow, okay.
But it, but it also highlights the need for them to have more training because they have less experience.
Yes.
And you don't want them to have the experience in real life. You want them to be able to get, gain the experience by doing the skill on a non-threatening time kind of thing. And I don't think the request is unreasonable. I can understand totally just starting your training and then you get interrupted because of reality. And be able to have it separated where you can focus and really provide training very deliberate and skilled training during that off time. So I had no hesitation. Because education is the most important, whether it be fire, police, whatever.
Absolutely.
Barbara?
And I think it's important to note that it's not only fire training, it's also for the EMT and keeping up their medical
Yeah, we're still
training as well.
We're still doing that on duty. Next year we'll probably come to, because we, we pay for a service to manage our EMS training now. And, you know, the town manager and I have spoken and we're trying to figure out how we can do that better and maybe see if we can do more in-house versus going offsite for a lot of those things. So next year, we'll focus on that. But we need to start somewhere, so.
You'll run into the same problem with distractions and interruptions, so.
Oh, it's a problem.
And you have three nurses here, so we've all had to keep up with CEUs and whatnot. So we understand how that works.
Absolutely.
Anybody have anything further for the chief? Looking good. Thanks, chief.
Absolutely.
Before we move on, did you bring my show and tell?
I did.
Want to go get them?
They were in my pocket.
All right. So question last night about sprinklers came up. And the the fire suppression system sprinklers. So we have a little, we have a little show and tell here and, and the chief can explain it more.
And we've got to get a brose.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's why we have the show and tell on the table and not.
So yeah, so the town manager came in today and, and, you know, mentioned that there was some questions about how do sprinkler systems work? And unfortunately it doesn't work like it does on TV or in the movies. When one head goes off, and this is what we consider to be a sprinkler head, it's only this one that the water is going to come out of, not the rest of them. There are unique systems for different types of applications where that might be. But for the everyday commercial building that you see or the store you enter, one goes off, that's the only one that's going to go off. And each one of these, and in the center is a, a section that melts at different degrees. So each one of these has a different temperature rating, depending on where the application is going to be. Most of them around 150, 175, but there are some that go up to 210 degrees. So when that centerpiece melts out or the glass melts out in the center of one of these, the water then comes out of the head. So you can see through here, it's, that's where the water comes out. And then the pendant at the tops makes the water spray in the particular pattern. And they're all engineered and designed to cover certain square footage of area. So as you can see, this one's a smaller one, whereas this one's a larger one. So this one's going to cover a larger area, whereas the smaller one won't. So, yeah, so when one sprinkler head goes off, that is the only one that is water is going to come out of. Now, if there's a lot of heat, another one may melt and that one will go off. There's water is going to come out of. Now, if there's a lot of heat, another one may melt and that one will go off. And, and, and that's how those systems kinda work. And the basic function of sprinkler systems is to minimize the damage and control the fire as. Quickly as possible, so that we don't have a large incident that gets out of hand. And now we need to call a lot of people and a lot of trucks to help us put it out, so.
And we also talked about, when in your office today, about lifespans.
Yeah, there are, and again, and I apologize, I don't know the life expectancy of each one of these, but each one of these does have a date of manufacture on it. So this one's two thousand. This one was, it didn't have a date, that's how old this one was, and this one was two thousand and eight. So there are, um. End of life for each one of these, um, and depending upon its application, we always refer to the manufacturer's recommendation as to when they should be replaced. So they do not last forever. Same thing with home smoke detectors, home carbon monoxide detectors. The typical lifespan of a home smoke detector is about ten years. Um, and smoke detectors around six or, I mean, it's carbon monoxide or six or seven. So you do have to kinda pay attention to the different detectors that you have, and you should get them replaced, you know, during those cycles. So.
Right. Now, the reason that I was wondering on those is I, the way I understood is the compressor's going up, he has, we have tiny leaks, and so I can. We gotta take care of those things for sure, but it wasn't a panic because with the charge system, it wasn't gonna be in the offices unless those heads failed or.
Correct.
And, yes.
Because of the age of some of the heads.
Yeah, there is that fear that because, you know, again, these, this one's just a solder that holds this metal in place that weakens over time. Perhaps the glass tube is becoming more fragile because, you know, glass as things age, it becomes more brittle. And again, if there's no, um, water pressure behind this, it's an air pressure, let's say it's twenty PSI. Well, now all of a sudden, we have the water rush through at fifty PSI, it may have the ability to force this. Um, center out of it, and now you may have a water problem, which is certainly not something that we wanna have, so.
Very good. Thanks for the education, Chief.
Absolutely.
So that answers that question about, okay. We can move on to code if you want.
Code enforcement, yep. Uh, again, pretty much a level funded budget. The biggest increase that we've asked for in this particular department was a fifty thousand dollar increase. Uh, in the computer section, computer and software upgrades. The request is for us to, um, move into. More mainstream and become an online permitting organization. Right now, everything we do in that department is paper, pen and paper. Um, and we do hear feedback from our customers that come in, and we're one of the very few communities around that is still doing. Paper and pen. Um, offline, we've heard from some contractors that they'll just do the work and not even pull a permit. Where is if it was online, they could just quickly go online, pay their fee, we go out to the inspection and everybody's happy. But some can't be bothered to come down to the station, fill out the paperwork, and then wait for the inspection. Again, we have to catch those contractors that are doing that work, and it's obviously very hard in a community this large, and the staff very small that's already overworked in what they're doing. When you look at, you know, the complexes that we have in town, the slate facility, the other apartment buildings on Daniel Webster Highway. I mean, our, our, our guys are all over town inspecting everything, and, and they're just, you know, can't always find these. Little pieces of, that are getting under the rug. But online permitting cer- certainly would be the first step for us to start to. Computerize that operation of what we do, and then also be better at data collection. And when people start to ask for information from our department, we will start to be able to give them better information in a more timely fashion. So again, like I described, we're still paper and pen. So if somebody puts in a freedom of information request, well, somebody in the secretary's staff has to go to the file room. Pull the file out, and then just start going through it one piece of paper at a time. As you know, that's time consuming. So if we can figure out a way to streamline our operations and be more efficient. And then also provide better information to the public. That's kind of the goal here. So that's why we've asked for the fifty thousand to. Start an online permitting program. The other thing we did with this program was we worked with our IT department and Jonathan in specific. Um, cause we, I, I was kinda mindful of, well, if we're gonna invest in a system. Can we look at something that is able to be used by other departments in town? So that maybe we can have one repository or one collection spot for the information. Right now, the assessors have theirs and community development has theirs, and the B W has theirs, and the sewer department has theirs. Well, if we can figure out a way. It's all the same plot. It's all the same property. So can we somehow figure out a way to put all that information in one, into one system? I think that would be, again, a much better way to do business if we can do it. And Jonathan was very, very helpful in helping us research some options for us to look at, so. That's how we came to this conclusion of about fifty thousand would be the first step in us trying to accomplish this. Long-term project of computerizing our data and being a little more efficient in what we do.
So Chief, what would you say, uh, that building permit? With the building permit and then going out and inspecting, so wh- wh- how many hands touch? A permit on.
So, yeah, so the, the secretary will take the permit at the window. It might need additional information or. Uh, information put on it. So either the building official or the building inspector may have to help out with that. Um, once that's all filed and completed, uh, it then sits on somebody's desk to go up to have the inspection done. So either. The building official, the building inspector will take care of the inspection. Then he comes back, let's say it fails. Cause that's gonna be a couple more steps. It fails, it sits, goes back to the secretary's desk to be rescheduled at a later point when it's ready to be done. The inspector has to go back out again to do the inspection, and then when they're all done, he has the paperwork to fill out, and then put the data entry into the software program that we have now. So, yeah, you're probably talking two or three hours for one permit, unless you say it's for a simple deck permit. You know, that's, that's a lot of time for a simple, you know, permit that should not take that long to do. That should be. Inspector, if, if we have the ability to do it, he'd have a tablet that he could enter all the information, sign it right off. If the permit passes, he can email the, the client. His, uh, uh, successful permit, or if it fails, he can certainly send him an email saying how he failed and how to get the next piece to. Have us go back out and re-inspect, and everything could just be done right there in front of the client versus us having to go back. And do the paperwork and a lot of back and forth with that. So that's kind of the, the goal, global picture for that.
Would help efficiencies.
Yeah.
And that's, that's really what it is. It will help the efficiencies in a, in a smaller department without expanding the department. Um, this year, we had to bring somebody in to help us out. Um, wouldn't say we probably wouldn't have brought that person back to help us because of the amount of. Inspections we had to do, but it certainly didn't help that we have this big paper process that. You know, it touches so many hands and then something gets lost along the way or gets misfiled in the wrong file, and. We're looking for it, and honestly, the biggest example I had is. I walked downstairs when, when, it used to be downstairs in community, when I walked downstairs and insurance, insurance agent was there and said, I wanna see the file. Because there was a fire at somebody's house. I wanna see the file. And he grabbed the file and started going through, and I'm like. Did he pull a permit for his attic work? And the person was flipping through the file, trying to find whether or not he pulled a permit. It would be so much easier if we had the computer system. Yep, he pulled the permit. This is the day, because they, the insurance company was looking any way not to pay for the fire damage in that house. So with the computerized system, this will help out in that process where things aren't being misfiled, and we don't have to say. Hey, Rick, do you remember back twenty years ago when you inspected Mallard Point? Did, uh, they pull a permit? You know, kinda deal. Um, yeah, so, kinda deal. So it would be all in a repository for, for us to move forward.
We've seen the benefit of technology improvements as time has gone on.
And the other thing is we're helping out our, we're helping out our customers as well. And it's not just for our customers, it's for our staff, but. We're helping our customers too, because now, for instance, if I'm working in Massachusetts, I wanna pull a deck permit, I gotta get there between eight and four. I don't get there on a Friday afternoon to get my permit. Now, I got a bunch of guys, crew coming over Saturday to help me put my deck together. What do I do? Do I cancel it? Or do I just forge ahead and, and, and get the hand slap later? So, you know, that would, online, they can go at their desk or at home and do everything they need to do and, and put it in, and. They would still be paying us, so the fees would be still there. So we'd, we'd get the fees still, which just ease.
We probably would see an increase in permits if we had the online ability. Again, based on talking to carpenters and contractors offline. No, no, obviously we'll tell you officially, that's what they do, but, um, they'd be more than willing to do things online if they had the ability. And I can certainly say, the window sometimes gets very busy at five minutes or four. Like Paul said, last, people just trying to get from where they're working to our office to pull papers. And you can tell they're a little frustrated that they have to do it in person, but our staff does a great job of working with them to get all the paperwork out and, and completed, so.
Are, are we behind other communities in this regard?
I, I would say yes. Now, again, there are other communities that don't have online permitting, but. Um, a community of this size, and when you start to look at other communities this size, most of them will have some type of online permitting system of some sort.
I'm just thinking that I recall having to go pull permits in Manchester, and I had to go pull permits at the office there.
The office. I mean, uh, Rick Jones is here. He did the yeoman's work on researching a lot of the different options and working with Jonathan. That he certainly could answer any questions that anybody has, um, cause I knew that that question would come up. What are other communities doing? So he certainly did the homework to make sure that we were comparable to other communities our size. And what are they doing and what are they using? So, yeah.
Since you're here.
I don't want you to.
Just wait till you have a seat.
I think it's green. There it is. So we, uh, we are not, we are behind as far as, uh, cities and towns out of our size, for sure. Uh, Manchester is a city. I can't, uh, recall them not having any kind of a program that, you know. Especially from department to department, that you wouldn't have, uh, any kind of relation with a, with a system that you can do online. You most certainly can apply, uh, by email with them. I'm pretty sure that you can still do that.
Oh, can you? Okay. I mean, I, they, they still went and pulled the file and opened it up and, and showed me stuff with the, the house I was dealing with and things like.
How long ago was that?
Uh, three or four years.
So when COVID hit, I'm sure that, that, that sparked a interest to.
It was before COVID, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, with the fact that. The town is increasing, they're getting the younger, uh, people coming in. Uh, most people that I talk to. Would prefer to do it online, would prefer to come in and pay with a credit card versus cash and checks. Uh, we just got the credit card.
Machine last year.
Months ago, maybe, so.
Yes.
Uh, and they're surprised that we have credit cards, the contractors. Uh, because they've been dealing with us with cash and checks for so long, and they said, oh, that's great. When are you gonna be online?
And, and this fifty-five thousand dollars covers.
Fifty. Fifty.
Well, the budget line went up fifty-five.
It was fifty-five? I'm sorry, yeah, fifty-five, okay. But Jonathan went through so many numbers when we did this, and I did my quick homework on my paperwork, so I apologize. So.
No, so it covers computers and software and tablets and, and all that kinda stuff, any training?
Made sure Jonathan gave me an honest answer, because he's going to be the one that's going to help us manage this as we go. So, um, we certainly relied on him heavily, and this is what he recommended would be a great number for us to start with, yes.
And you mentioned start with a couple of times now. Is this a, a, a multi-year development?
So, yeah, so as we move forward, as you know, there will be ongoing costs to keep it and manage the system, just like. The police department and Fire Department records management systems. There's ongoing fees for those every year that you have to pay. Um, our sense is it'll be about ten percent of the cost of the original software purchase that we do, so I don't know what that'll be yet. Um, but if we are lucky enough to get a program that we can expand on, well, then we'll look to maybe have the assessor's office jump on. I don't know what cost that would be. If we want community development to jump on, that would be another cost. I don't know how much that would be. So. Our thought is if we can get something that's expandable and people wanna take advantage of it, and we all collectively work together. Hopefully, we can do something going forward.
Okay. I was just trying to see whether you were talking fifty thousand this year and then fifty thousand for the next five years, or whether it was fifty thousand and then ten thousand maintenance or something like that.
So there are maintenance costs, and again, I don't know how much it would be to add on, and maybe Rick knows, cause he did some work, how to add on like the assessor's office or how to add on. Community development.
Uh, granted, that would be an extension and, and, and expansion of the system. I understand that would be a cost, but.
Right.
Assuming after this first year, you guys can show benefit. I, I, I would think it would sell itself going forward.
We hope so.
Me too.
Does that include, um, the fire permits as well?
We could incorporate that into the system. Um, we're still learning the fire records management system for CSI that the town purchased last year. They're still building out some of the modules for us, so we're not sure how that's gonna work. Um, but if we can see, uh, more efficiencies using this product versus the records management system product from CSI. We'll take advantage of whichever one works the best.
Yeah, cause last time I was at the house, at the station, and it was like, you know, the, the form is sitting outside, you know, in the. Reception area.
Yes.
At the front door.
Yes.
Fill it out, throw it under the window or something.
Right, so CSI has opportunities for us to look at for online things, but we're not sure it's gonna be as. Efficient as this product, cause that's all these guys do, or this product that we would go with. Um, whereas CSI, they're more of a data collection, computer rated dispatch program system. Those types of things, not so much online permitting. They do have a piece, but we, again, we haven't seen it yet, so we're not sure if it'll work or not.
Just for the minute taker, Rick Jones, building official. Building and health official, for the minute taker, and for those at home, Rick Jones, building and health official. So, I just wanted to say that. And, and we're looking at, you know, with like most of the software. It's usually a seat-based, you know, we're gonna store it in the cloud, or we're gonna store it on our servers. So there's a lot of. Those kinda questions that we have to have answered, uh, with it, but usually, like the chief said, it's about ten percent of the purchase costs is. Is what they're charging us for maintenance costs on. So we're, we'll look at that, you know, it's. It might be a monthly fee, so we, we just have to figure out what, the software industry has changed. It is no longer, you can go and just pick it off the shelf. It's, you know, they figured out, oh geez, we're losing money by doing that. We can charge them per seat. Per month, per year. Yeah, so, but those are things that we're looking at with it. Um, the other thing is, is that, uh, the chief and I have been talking. About, uh, savings in the department, salary savings and, and maybe. Buying it out of salary savings that we have this year, so we would be able to purchase it sooner than later. Because building season is coming up in the, in the spring, so. But we, we still need to talk about that. When we, when we discuss the budget, and we have our budget meeting that we go over. With the, with the council next week or the week after that, we'll have a better answer for you, but we're still working on that to try to figure out. Can we purchase it this year, you know, does it next year? So. Well said. Perfect.
Great, Council, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Yes. Just, Chief, just one where I sent this to the police department, and I wanna be able to say it to you. That I personally, and I think I can talk for the council too, wanna express our sincere appreciation and respect. For the Fire Department and what all of you do. And we hear of all the wonderful things that. The Fire Department does, serving our community, and we just wanna maybe make that public.
Thank you. Uh, I do look at, you know, our guys don't do it for the accolades. Our, our guys enjoy. Helping people, and if they need something, they're gonna do everything they can to help in any way they can, so, thank you. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to thank you for your, uh, your patience and understanding and, uh, and listening to us and our concerns and needs.
Take care now, guys. Thank you. All right, number twenty-seven, propositions of debt.
We have debt?
Thank you. I'm trying not to sneeze.
It's gonna like this, I thought it was a.
Sorry. Uh, we got some good news. Uh, our drainage bond from two thousand and seven was paid off this fiscal year. So we have that. We have one outstanding bond left, and that's the highway garage of, uh, that we purchased in two thousand and seventeen. It was. Three point three million dollars. And Tom, when is that gonna be paid off?
Uh, that will be paid off in February of two thousand and thirty-eight.
Okay, so we have. So we, so we have fifteen more years on, on that highway, ha- highway garage bond, but, uh, that's the only bond we have. Um, for a community of our size to only have one general fund bond and one sewer bond. That is unbelievable. Um, for instance, Dover bonds every year. Twenty-something million dollars. They don't do capital reserve. Um, Bedford just reconstructed roads. They did a major bond on their roads.
They've done that for years.
Yep, they've been, yeah. Uh, Amherst, the same thing, they reconstructed roads, bonds. So for a community of our size to only say that we have two bonds technically outstanding, one in wastewater and one in, um. And, and the general fund is, is unheard of, unheard of, and that is because of the use of our capital reserve funds. Um, you know, most communities would have had a bond, the uh, we, the, the fire, the ladder truck. We were fortunate enough to get ARPA money to help offset the price of the ladder truck, but most communities would have had a bond that. Most communities would bond the fire truck. We have our capital reserve funds that are, are set up and I'm kind of approaching the subject of the next item on the agenda too, but uh.
Oh, you're spending already, huh?
Before you move on to that, are you also?
Yeah, the only other thing I want to say is I, I, I said we only have two bonds, one in wastewater, one in the uh, general fund. We actually have another bond in wastewater. However, as you heard last night, that's probably not gonna start being, making payments until twenty twenty-five. So we're still working on that. And today I saw a requisition. We're about halfway done. So out of thirty-two million dollars, we have about eight, sixteen million left in construction. So we're on pace to finish off in twenty twenty-four substantial completion.
Thanks, Barbara.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that when we do the town meeting, I would like you to say everything you just said because we have a lot of people in town who look at Bedford and say, oh, they have a new this, or they have a new that, or their roads are great, or da, 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 da. And their property taxes is so much less. Well, because they owe more debt, probably. I bet how they, how they finish off that, I don't know, but I think that's an important thing from a fiscal standpoint that folks in town need to know about. We only have two. Um, and that that's unusual.
It's opened over the years. It's opened a lot of doors as far as grants and things of that nature. Getting our projects moved up. And um, and then while having the ability, you have projects that are ready to go. We've utilized that concept numerous times.
Yeah, no, we, we have with uh, with especially the bridge projects, because communities don't vote uh, for their twenty percent share and there's this money hanging out there like, yep, we're good. Yep, we got the plan sitting on the shelf. We, we, yep, here you go. We have our final design plans for that bridge. Now move us up. Here you go. We got our money already set up. And uh, that's something that was set up uh, before my time. Um, and, and the community set them up. Uh, but it, it's one way that we're able to do a lot more projects and get things accomplished versus having to bond everything.
Yep, absolutely. All right.
Capital reserves.
Deposits, yes.
Uh, basically I flatlined the capital reserve deposits for um, the general fund this year. Um, at one point, one point nine million dollars. Um, and uh, the only increase would be to uh, sewer and we're going from five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. Um, we, we definitely look at our CIP. Um, and utilize our CIP when we're expanding these funds from these capital reserves and, and budgeting. Um, thing, uh, money and things of that sort. Um, when interest rates are great and investments are great, those little hiccups that we get when something costs an extra three or four thousand dollars, we, we can do, afford it. Um, when interest rates start turning a little bit, we start seeing not as much as those, as long as the interest keeps up with inflation. The good thing and um, with the capital reserve funds is that uh, there are specific ways that you can invest it. And uh, it's very secure. So we're not gonna be losing our principal on this stuff. Uh, because we can't invest in stocks and we can't invest in nods. They have to be like money markets or backed securities or federally insured stuff. Um, so the trustee of trust funds when they invest this. And they also look out at our CIP and say, all right, so the next time you're gonna take, for instance, a fire truck, which will be two years from now, how much money can I set aside in that fire capital reserve fund that you're not gonna need for the next two years and maybe get a better rate? So by, by setting this stuff up and having an active CIP and sticking to our active CIP and, and looking at our projects and things of that sort, um, we actually are able to get higher yields on our capital reserve funds as well. Um, like I said, I flatlined everything, didn't increase anything. Um, and we should be good from what I under, unless something major gets blown out of the water. You know, we should be good, but there are, there are projects that we have on slate that we've bid and it's two hundred percent more than what we have scheduled in the capital reserve fund and the determination is, you know, what, 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 let's go value engineering. Do we need everything? What do we need? What, what are our needs and not the wants on some of these things? So uh, but, long story short, I think these deposits will keep us on our capital improvement plan moving forward.
Alrighty. Last but not least.
Fire protection. Um, we have a part, fire protection zone where uh, it's in the southeastern corner of the town, down off of uh, um, down by BAE Systems, Manchester Street in that area. Um, that is serviced by Penachuk. Um, this is the amounts of money that we pay Penachuk to have hydrants in that area. Um, and this is paid by the individuals in that area who are serviced by those hydrants. There's a special uh, added uh, betterment on their tax bill. So they pay for the hydrants in that area. Um, and uh, right now it's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, I believe. Or was, I better double check. Hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Um, and that's basically they, Penachuk, who's regulated kind of through the P, even though it's part of Nashville, it's regulated through the PUC and their rates get published and they charge off to the community. And the people in that area actually paid that fee. So that's why it's a separate, I gotta include in the budget because gross appropriations, there's an off, this is one of those self-supporting.
Okay. Very good.
I, I got a couple more things. It's all right. One is an answer to last night's question on the sewer. Um, it's calculated in our rate. So those individuals that use the Penachuk pump station go to Nashville, it's all calculated in the, the rate itself. Um, talking to assessing today, it'd be a project, but we could try to figure out which homes go to Penachuk, which businesses go through Penachuk, divide out a new rate, kind of like what we do with the fire protection and utilize that. Uh, but right now, it's always been determined that it's all part of the, the rate for the sewer as part of the sewer infrastructure, um, in the sewer system. So they're all, we all, it's calculated in that rate. And it's calculated in the rate study as well. So it's just an expense.
We, the two different components are done two different ways is intriguing, but I, I don't know that there's a massive difference in how we'd, you know, divide out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, you know, how we'd divide out because without going through there and say, okay, these are all the homes that are on sewer in that area. And are there, because of where, excuse me, we have an interceptor near Thornton Ferry School. So what homes in that area get pushed this way versus pushed that way and businesses and things of that sort? So we are charging the businesses in that area our, our commercial rates, um, when they use the sewer. Um, so it would be an interesting study that would need to be done to figure out, are we making money? Are we losing money with this? Um, and know how many homes in that area actually go to Penachuk. Um, pump station. So if the council would like, I could say we can do that. It's not gonna be done anytime in the near future because of our staffing, peop- our staffing shortages at wastewater, who would be the bulk of the yeoman work on this to figure out where the lines are and who goes there. So, uh, but like I said, it's all based on a user fee. We just, even though it's going to Nashville, we consider that part of our sewer system and all users pay that one fee. Alright, good. Alright, last item for me. Um, next Wednesday, we have an open date. It was a snow date. We have an open date. However, um, if the council wants to start their review on Wednesday, that will be fine. Don't have a problem with that. Um, we can do that. Um, the budget will not be finalized in its entirety by then, only because on Thursday of next week, um, we have at least two, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I'm trying to see if I got an email for the third. Um, we have two um, ratifications or union contracts that are next Thursday. Um, and we might have a third ratification. They were voting tonight uh, on it and I haven't, that's why I was just checking to see if I got an email yet to say they ratified. Um, but uh, so you wouldn't have the non-union, we, in this budget, remember there is no non-union pay increase. Um, and you know, usually when we finish it all up, we, we cross the Ts, dot the Is and that. The only other day that I could see that we have available to go over our budget review um, before February would be the thirty-first of December, uh, thirty-first of January, December. Get into my time travel machine, which is a Tuesday. Um, for, for the meeting. So it's up to the council's pleasure of how you want to proceed. Do you want to proceed with your budget changes and do not take up the non-union wage increase until we do the public hearing? Like we have done in years past, and I'm talking several years past, we used to do it that way. Or do you want to bring a full budget forward for the public hearings?
When is the public hearing?
Public hearing is the sixteenth of February.
Personally, I'd rather have the full budget. Rather than do it piecemeal.
I mean, it can be done. We can know the number that night at the public hearing.
Yeah, we could know the number of that night.
It doesn't.
Or we could, we, we could, we could do it. Right now, we could either do it on the twenty-second. Oh, sorry, wrong month. I'm in February already. We could do it on the twenty-fifth or the thirty-first. If we do it on the twenty-fifth, just know that the uh, the, the non-union pay won't be included in the budget adjustments like we've done in the past. If we do it on the thirty-first of January, we can have those numbers included.
But even if we have it on the twenty-fifth, we know there are probable changes.
There's gonna be changes for, for the, the non-union period.
Everything will be done except for that.
Right.
I'd go for the twenty-fourth, fifth, but that's my opinion.
Wednesday next week.
Twenty-fifth. He's just pulling my leg.
And just, I think long range forecast, not that this means anything, but I think um, I don't know. I thought there was another storm brewing on Wednesday, Thursday next week. Not that it means anything because it's just budget review. A counter review.
Then, then you get the thirty-first, it's a snow.
I'm just, I just put that out there. I want you to have all the information.
Whereas if we hold it to the thirty-first, that just limits, it's even more.
We have a meeting on the twenty-sixth as well.
Correct.
Two more meetings in a row.
Yeah.
Next week. Yeah.
Plans for that. It's selfish, you're.
It, it pleasure of the council. I'll do whatever.
Work, whatever it is.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the dates. You wouldn't believe me if I told you I did anyway, but um, I would prefer to have a complete budget to take to a public hearing.
Well, we still work, right?
So if we need, if we need the latest date to have that done, that's where I would be.
Typically, the non-union is a percent increase and that calculation for all the other add-ons would be easy to calculate in, I would imagine, I'm not.
We have number, we, I, I have, I have, I have a percent that I will be presenting to the council, um, for the non-union pay increase. Um, and I have the dollar amount, so we do, we already calculated it, so it's not a, not like I gotta do a lot of calculations with it. I do have a dollar amount in mind and, and, and a percent. Um, I think things. Either way, I could actually present it on the twenty-fifth if, if, if those, you, I know I have two ratifications on the union. It's the third one. It's just, I could do it. I just, we don't usually like doing that until the council ratifies the union agreements.
So the twenty-fifth, we won't have the final budget and we won't have potentially one of the union contracts understood. So there's a couple of things potentially still outstanding on the twenty-fifth.
But I should. They ratified. So we have three ratifications on the twenty-sixth. Sorry.
That we're gonna talk about on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about the three contracts on the, on the twenty-sixth.
So on the twenty-fifth, we still don't have that information though.
What information?
No, because, yes, no, you don't have the final numbers. We've talked about it in our meetings when you gave me my marching orders, but you don't have the final, final numbers.
So in the budget discussion, we won't have that number included because you can't include it until we've approved it, right?
Ri- right, but that's a separate warrant article, so those would be, but the overall, the overall, when we go through it and say, the overall tax rate is increasing by X cents, we won't have those added on.
That's right, we'll be a separate. Cause they're additionals.
Because those are additional items.
That's right.
So.
Alright, I still don't care.
So I, I'm just saying, you know, it's gonna be a, it's. This year's been very challenging for the, for, for, out of my eighteen years doing the budgets, this has been the most challenging with dates and getting stuff in, in line because the way February falls out with it, the second Tuesday in February and being pushed out to almost the third week of February. So this has been one of those challenging years for, for the budget, so um.
And you still have potential, um, what's the word? Petition. Petition warrant articles.
Yeah, we have a petition warrant article and petition bond. Now, I haven't, I haven't heard anything, so if anybody is pointing a petition warrant article, petition bond, please call my office. Um, because the only thing that goes on the warrant technically through our charter is a money article. If it's a petition warrant article for XYZ, that doesn't include money, there are different avenues in our charter that spell out how those are handled by the council. And usually it's more signatures and a public hearing within sixty days. So if it's not a money article, it usually doesn't, money articles go directly to the warrant on a petition. If it's not a money article, the council then has to hold a public hearing based through our charter and then either yay or nay. And if they come in on the last day, on the fourteenth of February, we will not have enough time to get them on the warrant. If it's not a petition money article.
Okay, so we're still back to the date.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, but I'll go with whatever.
We'll make a motion and see what happens.
I would like to move that we have the proposed additional budget meeting on the twenty-fifth of January.
That would be the council's review, final review.
Council's final review at six thirty PM.
Yes.
Second. This is my, Nancy Harrington, seconded by Tom. For the discussion, see none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm staying. I was in opposition. So if I. If, if I understand it correctly, it was a six-one-zero.
I believe so.
Big with Barbara.
Okay, so I will put together stuff for the twenty-fifth. And uh, we'll have all the department heads here on the twenty-fifth. Do you have any other questions? Um, and of course, if they're not here, free to cut the.
Alright. I think we're all good for the evening. Seconded by Barbara. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed or abstaining?
Proposed to abstain, seven zero zero. Thank you, everybody.